A 10-20-18 meeting of the Oshkosh Common Council with the Speaker, please take the roll call.
Herman.
Here.
Pansky. Here.
Rosie.
Here.
Peck.
Here.
Palmary.
Here.
Allison Osby.
Cummings.
Here.
Ms. Hubrick, Ms. Allison Osby texted me a moment ago. She's on her way.
Thank you. Present six.
Would you please all stand now while Deputy Mayor Herman leads us in the invocation, followed by the pledge of allegiance?
We come together this evening to discuss the issues that confront our city. May we always seek the wisdom to do things that reflect our concern for the people whom we represent.
You be seated now. I have certificates for students.
(laughing).
Is I understand that you're from the Shapiro STEM Academy? So I will start with that. I'm going to ask you your name, your age, where you go to school, which we know now, and your favorite subject.
My name is Selso Collins, and I'm in grade five, and my favorite subject is reading.
Okay, thank you. Certificate for you.
My name is Drew Burnt. I go to, I am in fifth grade. I go to Jacob Shapiro STEM Academy, and my favorite subject is math.
Thank you. And here's a certificate for you. You must be Sophie.
My name is Sophia Hausworth, and I go to Shapiro STEM Academy. I'm in the fifth grade, and my favorite subject is math.
Thank you. It sounds like we have a bunch of engineer, potential engineers here. James.
(laughing).
Thank you. Now you can stay and watch the meeting. You go home and study. Thanks, Madam Dan. First on the agenda is a presentation. They're all leaving.
They heard about the presentation.
They did. Sorry, Mark. First is a presentation by City Manager Roloff as far as our facilities assessment.
What I'm going to start out with is John Urban, our General Services Manager, to go over the facilities portion of it. There's some other things that tie in with that, but John took the lead on getting some of this information that is in your packet in a matrix, and John's going to just talk about what he's found to date and make sure we're on the right track. Really kind of make sure that we're following the directives that council laid out. So, John?
Good evening. As indicated by City Manager Roloff, the General Services Office was asked to collect facility maintenance data from all city departments as, so as to provide the council with a comprehensive look at our city-owned facilities for the long term. This data was compiled into the facility matrix, maintenance matrix that you should have received in your packets. The purpose of the presentation is to provide you with a short summary of the data collection methodology of the matrix, staff analysis, and recommendations. So again, turning to the facility maintenance matrix, the data collection methodology identified 75 municipal buildings organized alphabetically beginning with City Hall. From each building, we collected facility data from the last 15 years and organized that into seven facility assessment categories. These categories include moving left or right on the pages, the HVAC, heating, ventilation, air conditioning, equipment and components, roofing systems, emergency generators, elevators, any space needs assessments or master plans, and any other additional facility reports, recent updates, or anticipated future facility improvements completed by the departments. Just a few comments on the various assessments as noted in the matrix. The HVAC and roofing assessments and replacement schedules for all the buildings save the utilities are coordinated annually by the, annually by the General Services Office. The generator and elevator assessments are only applicable to certain buildings as needed, and the replacement and maintenance of those are coordinated along departmental lines. The master plan reports primarily relate to the Parks Department, including various parks, parks buildings, and the Menominee Zoo. Space needs assessments have either been conducted or underway for most of our departmental buildings, including the field operations facility, the public library, the public museum, the Parks Administration, forestry building, transit administration and operations buildings, senior center buildings, the Oshkosh Convention Center, and utilities. And whenever applicable, the additional notes, reports, and recent update section on the right-hand side, we tried to list any significant completed or anticipated projects ranging from HVAC to roofing to other facility items that departments had. So in terms of staff analysis of the facility maintenance matrix, there are several highlights we wanted to mention. The first is our municipal stock varies greatly in terms of age, condition, operational needs, and functions. We've got senior centers, we got a city hall, we got fire stations, we have a convention center. It ranges quite a bit in terms of what our stock has. The other analysis we took out of the matrix is departments are doing a pretty good job on staying on top of coordinating their building maintenance, the replacement, the assessments, and long-term planning. And finally, and probably the largest missing component brought forward from this matrix, which subsequently has also become the primary future facility maintenance recommendation from this project, is that space needs assessments are overdue for three departmental buildings. That includes City Hall, the safety building, and the fire department. In terms of what a space needs assessment can provide for the City Hall, the safety building, and the fire department, you know, we've, we've certainly done RFPs for these in the past, and we've seen other RFPs from other communities, but basically, they can do all kinds of things as it helps to identify certain things, such as evaluate the building and facility for current projected department programming needs, review current space allocation and layouts, and make short and long-term recommendations to allow meeting, for meeting the current and future needs of staff and the public, to make the current space more efficient, and identify and document building and site deficiencies related to code, ADA compliance, security, performance, expected useful service life, and operational efficiency, and develop potential facility capital investment options. Staff review of current, some recent space needs assessments would lead us to recommend allocating approximately $30,000 to $50,000 per each building staff, I'm sorry, per each building space needs assessment. One final note of reminder, as you probably may recall, Winnebago County is expected to end their lease for the safety building in the coming month. In anticipation of this, the 2018 CIP was allocated $30,000 for the safety building space needs assessment to determine future uses and options for, of course, the county, the former county leased areas. So that wraps up the, our report of the facility maintenance matrix. At this time, I'll turn it over to City Manager Roloff for any other follow-up.
Thank you, John. I hope that this is kind of in line with what you were talking. I think there was some suspicion that City Hall and public safety facilities were probably the ones that stood out the most, and this really confirms what, I think, what some of council's suspicions were. This building hasn't been evaluated in a while, and, and I believe it was about 15 years ago that it was looked at, at that time, and that was when we were in the process of purchasing the safety building in the first place. Some of the next steps, they kind of tie in with some of the other goals. One specific goal that the council had also given me, they has to do with public safety staffing. And in terms of the order, I haven't mentioned in the memo, but I just want to repeat it just to, to make sure we're still in, on the right track. The City Hall portion of this, I'm very familiar with, with doing these types of assessments. I've done them before, and as John mentioned, it can cost anywhere from $30,000 to $50,000. What I propose is that we go out and get a, get proposals for that type of work to get done. We also have the public safety staffing information that the councils asked us for, and I think we need to do that before we start looking at public safety buildings, because buildings are a function of people, and that's a much more in-depth analysis that I think council has identified. So my suggestion is that we work on the public safety staffing first. We have a proposal that's later on in the agenda, assuming that council is, that we're on the right track with this, and we can begin that, the police side of the public safety staffing analysis. Once we have that, then we have a good idea of what we'd be looking for in terms of a building, and then we can bring somebody onboard to do the, the police building side of it. As far as fire, it would, I would essentially say the same order, but with Chief Franz retiring, I don't want to put too much on his platter. There's several things I'd like him to complete, and I really think this is more appropriate for a new fire chief to take a look at anyway. The difference in my experience with, with police and fire staffing is the nature of their work and where their base is. Police is scattered throughout the community, every, all the way down to individual squad cars, versus the facilities in fire are much more strategic in location, and it's a function of staffing. So I believe that we should do the staffing first with fire as well before we start doing the facility. But my experience has been that we'll get some of the facility stuff done as part of the staffing process. So rather than go out and get that done prematurely, get an idea of what the recommendations might be on that side. As you can see in the, in the staffing, in the memo that Mr. Urban put together, it's about $30,000 to $50,000 for the City Hall building analysis. I'd propose that we, we get that done, begin working on that first and foremost. Then concurrent with this, also get the police staffing done. Hold off on doing the police staffing until it comes into focus a little better, then we go ahead and do the building analysis. And then similarly, once the, the new chief, new fire chief gets onboard, gets his sea legs, so to speak, then we can start working on that one. Ms. Larson has some fund reservations and some, some items later on in the agenda. She's recommending a $250,000 contingency account anyway. Those would all come back to council for approval anyway. The first one out of the gate would be the public safety staffing as well as the City Hall. Mr. Urban isn't prepared tonight to do that because we haven't done a proposal, we haven't requested proposals for that, but shortly after this, assuming that we're on the right track, I'd ask Mr. Urban to get that done. So with that, we're prepared to answer any questions. Certainly welcome feedback. Are we on the track of where council, I think, established the goals? And I know you would ask me to come back and just say, just clarify what, what goals you had laid out. Just want to make sure I'm on track with that. And if you want us to tweak anything, certainly we're prepared to do that as well.
Deputy Mayor Herman has a question.
Thank you. No, I think, I think you're in, for me at least, that's the direction that I was thinking, you know, as the deputy mayor leading the council in our discussions earlier. You know, we have a very good program. John's got a very good program with our, our maintenance side of our city-owned facilities. We have our master plans for Rainbow Menominee, South Park. You know, we, every year, we're doing more and more in our parks. This year, Fugelberg Park is being redone, the Bolt Launch is being redone. We, we pick a park a year in a sense. So I think those facilities are being maintained, but I think you hit the big ones. I think City Hall, the police department and fire department, and that fire department obviously came up this year with the budget discussion of manpower and looking at within the next five years, six years, we may need to look at a new fire station. So I think planning, just like we did with Central Garage. So I think we really do need these, these space study needs so that we can start to, you know, either set money aside if we can, or look at, as we do some debt reconsolidation, that that money can be targeted for future, because as this city grows, and we're, we're, you know, on a subdivision development on the agenda tonight, so we're going to be adding more property into the city, that we have to be prepared for that. We can't just all of a sudden, boom, hey, we're, we're needing this, this, and this in our, in our facilities, because it's just too expensive. And if we use the, the county, for an example, how many years it's taken them to transition over to the Bogash Building, from the Orin King Building to the Courthouse, Safety Building, et cetera, it's proven that it takes years, because government, it's hard to spend money in government. So I think, I believe, I think we're headed in the right direction. And getting good studies and good data always drives a lot of these, these decisions. So I think we're in the right direction.
Councilmember Palmary.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So a couple of questions that I have relate to, so it looks like we're talking about doing staffing and space needs, planning separately, and for police and for fire. And I guess, you know, my question is, is it realistic or feasible to have like one consultant working on both the staffing piece of it along with the spatial planning part of it? And, and I guess, I think I read something in here that there's kind of a specialized planning consultant for that staffing for the police department. So I guess my question is, are there some opportunities for us to save some planning costs by looking at things simultaneously within the same RFP? And then the other piece of it is, a question I have is whether or not the Sustainability Advisory Board will be, I guess, working alongside on the brick and mortar piece of this. For example, I noticed a number of the buildings we are either planning within the next few years, or within, yeah, five to 10 years, a number of roofs being replaced. Do we customarily just go with what we've always done? Are we looking at metal roofs, those kind of things? And then the other thing was, did we capture the square footage and number of, I guess, people and departments that are within each of those in the inventory?
Each facility analysis goes through each department, or in the case of public safety, they'll go through each of those departments to identify growth, potential growth areas. That's pretty standard. Those are typically done with architectural firms, similar Cooney Architects that did the Public Works Building. Prior to doing Public Works, they took a look at Public Works and Parks. The council, the council members who were on the council at the time, when we were taking the tour, we took a tour of both Public Works as well as Parks. So we, we put those together, so that, that Cooney did that. I could, I envision something similar in this case. There is some marriage between City Hall and public safety building because of our proximity and the nature of that. The police department facilities are typically concentrated unless you're in a really large city with precincts and that, but we're not there. But that's certainly something we can look at, and there has been discussions over the years, if you take a look at some old documents, that we do need to work with that, and that's something that, that John could do, putting together the RFP. With respect to the public safety police RFP, it was clearly represented in there that we might be looking at another study. The firm that Mr. Urban and Chief Smith looked at has experience on both sides of the public safety aisle, and so we hinted that you do a good job. We might talk to you again, and since you'll be well-versed with us, we hope you sharpen your pencil when you do that. And I think that message was, was out there pretty well, and the firm that, that they're recommending seems to fit that bill. Want to make sure I got all your questions there.
Sustainability Advisory Board, metal roofs.
We haven't done that yet, and it's not for any conscious reason, so I jotted it down when you said it, and perhaps that's something we can do. A lot of our roofing is, is more on the, it's, I wouldn't call it maintenance. It's much higher level than maintenance, but we have not gone to them so far, but I'll bring that back to staff. It's not something that we can't do. It's just that, how do we incorporate that in there? So I think that that's, that's a legitimate issue.
Yeah, just the reason I ask about that is because it, I mean, I'm only recently having read that we're looking at 50 years as opposed to, you know, 20 with the metal roofs on the residential side. Not sure if the same applies in the commercial application, so.
Any comment? John's my roofing guy. He, some things are thrust upon you. Roofing is one of them, so.
We typically, when we work with our roofing engineer, which is SCG, we try to find the most cost-effective and energy-efficient approach, whether it's roofing or HVAC for that matter. As it relates to a metal roof versus maybe a roof membrane or an asphalt, we haven't had to make that decision yet. It hasn't been one of those, hey, you could consider this type, because maybe the application just hasn't been right for a metal roof. But to Mark's point, we can certainly bring it up with him and make sure it's, you know, on their radar when we're looking at those projects, so.
Thanks.
Did I get all of them? I just wanted to make sure. Okay.
As a reminder for those younger members of the council or in the audience, this was converted from the high school to the city hall in the early 1960s. And back then, the city was about 40,000 people. The clerks area, Oshkosh, was the police department in the building. So the city has grown substantially over the last half-century, and we're still operating in a building that was never designed as a city hall. It was converted from a high school, so we've, and I don't think there was a great conversion 60, 50 years ago, so it's showing its 1960s age.
Hence the boys bathrooms on one side of the building and the girls on the other side.
That's exactly it. Councilmember Pansky.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, Mr. Roloff, I do believe that this is exactly what council had asked for, so I appreciate you going into the detail and making sure that we're updated on that. John, I do have a question regarding the matrix specifically. Is this something that you created just for this purpose? I, okay. It, it's great. I'm just wondering and kind of hoping that you will keep this in the future as sort of an ongoing and updatable document?
We had the same conversation when we were going through.
Keep talking. I think this is a very valuable document.
Absolutely.
But it wasn't, I think it was a creation of John and his staff, and I'm, I very much appreciate, because it gives you a great snapshot of where we are.
Of everything, and I think you can very easily keep it updated, not just for our records here in this conversation, but for the, the general public as well, if anybody out there is interested in this stuff. Another question then regarding the City Hall issue that was pointed out in the assessment, well, once we get the assessment, if you do find that we are in need of space, do you have a plan in mind? I mean, there's really not a whole lot of expansion that can go on in this area. What, what do you anticipate?
I, I'm telling you this based on experience. First thing you want to do is, you know, look where our growth areas are. And I'll have to temper that. There'll be some enthusiasm, I'll say, from departments that, oh yes, we're going to grow by leaps and bounds. We have to temper that with reality, temper that with planned growth of the community. As the mayor said, in, you know, 1960, we were about, you know, in the low 40s. Now we're in the, you know, middle 60s. Taking a look at growth areas where certain areas functionally might change, and then what you look for, and I've done this a few times, so you look for functional matches within the organization. Typically administrative type of services, pretty much the folks you see here, finance personnel, generally, they stick together. Sorry if you're stuck with me. On the other hand, the development side of things, engineering, community development, those services typically try to functionally stay together, and you think of like one-stop shopping for our customers. You want people, if they have to get a permit, they generally have to go through both engineering. So those are the functional areas you'll look at, and so it'll depend on who's, what part of the balloon's going to pop out first and the most, and then we'd have to take a look at that. So it's, it's probably premature at this point, but I can just tell you based on my experience that that's usually where you start to look at the functional matches.
So it could be a little bit of a shakeup.
It could be, but I, I'll take a deep breath in awe, and I think we'll be okay.
All right, thank you.
Councilperson Palmary.
Just one more follow-up question then. Do we have all of our municipal buildings in our GIS, and with more of those particulars, again, such as like square footage, and do we have that in a map format?
All of our, all of our buildings are in our GIS system. Whether we add this type of information, you know, probably makes some sense.
I know. In addition, the, Paul Griniger with the insurance has all of the square footage for insurance purposes. He has that, itemized for the buildings as well. I don't know what all the GIS entails with all the stock.
I jotted it down, so I asked that question. Thank you. So we have a few things on the agenda tonight that you'll see, but I needed to put this on the front end, because if I'm not on track, some of the things may not be necessary tonight. But I believe there's some items that Ms. Larson's pointing out from a financial standpoint, and even though technically professional services less than 50,000, which, or less than 75, and the contract that Mr. Urban and Chief Smith have looked at is under 50, it's not budgeted until you budget it later on in the meeting, so I can't report on something. I haven't signed the contract there because I wanted to make sure that we were on track. So that's sort of the progression of, of where we're going with the meeting tonight. So I think that's all staff has on this one. Appreciate the information. I think I, from what I heard from somebody, I can't remember who said it, but, you know, there might be some value to putting this on the website for people to see, here's how our buildings are doing, you know, sort of a, it's very similar to what the school district's been doing. They've, you know, taken a look and assessing their facilities. We're not as facility-heavy as a school district, but we're close second, so we, we have a lot of facilities we need to maintain. Appreciate all the work that John did in putting this together.
And four of them are historic, all over 100 years old, which adds another set of complications to the renovation, the maintenance, and so forth. So it's, it's a fairly complicated issue. Next, we have citizens' statements to council. Pam, did anyone register to speak?
Yes, we do have an individual.
Okay. Citizens, citizens are to address the council only. Statements are limited to five minutes. Must address items that are not listed on the council meeting agenda. Are limited to issues that have an impact on the city of Oshkosh, and the common council may address the future meeting. It must not include endorsements of any candidates or other electioneering. Pam?
Danae Blablum, 823 Prospect Avenue.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the common council. Thank you for your service to our community and for allowing us to speak to you tonight about a topic that is important to us and the lives of our future citizens. I am Danae Blaybaum.
And I'm Brett Munch, and I live on 803 Grove Street, and we are both who are currently attending Oshkosh High School, and we're here to discuss our concern on conversion therapy in the city of Oshkosh, and how we want to put prohibition onto it.
We would be the second city in Wisconsin to prohibit conversion therapy. Milwaukee was the first on March 27th, 2018. Nine states have prohibited conversion therapy already.
Our goal would hopefully be able to motivate it to go to state level and help Wisconsin be one of the next states to ban it, and hopefully the nation to protect people from this therapy. The conversion theories of range of dangerous and discredited treatments and practices that falsely claim to change someone's sexual expression, orientation, and gender. And as of January 2018, 6,098,000 citizens have already been put through treatment.
350,000 adolescents aged 13 to 17. The majority of the treatment has been processed through churches. More than 50% of the treatment includes talk therapy, treatment similar to alcohol or drug addiction, hypnosis, medication, and inducing nausea and vomiting paralysis, and the worst is using electric shock therapy. With a mere 8% success rate, the side effects outweigh the benefits.
Some risks of the therapy are depression, social withdrawal, low self-esteem, intimacy issues, suicide attempts, and thoughts, and at least five times percent more are, have, sorry, depression is about five times more higher to happen, and three times more with drug use and unprotected sex due to the therapy. And majority of people are, again, 13 to 17 years old. These kids are barely even out of high school, and they're even put through a treatment that can traumatize people for a long time, and the treatment has been discredited by the Psychiatric Association and Medical Association.
One of our idols is Sam Brinton. His parents feared that all gay people would live a condemned life without God and had him treated with conversion therapy. His treatment included locking him in his room when not in therapy and wrapping copper heating coils around his wrists while looking at male couples. He was even treated with electrodes and eventually attempted suicide. This is, he is now a graduate of MIT and advocating for the LGBTQ community.
Our next call for action will be contacting churches who are against the therapy, and who, we are also in the process of making a video called hashtag "This Is Me," showing citizens, showing that this is who they are, and we're hoping to make awareness and let people know this is a major issue that is still happening with this therapy.
We would also like to ask you what you think our next step should be. Thank you for listening to what we have to say. I hope you'll take this into consideration for making Oshkosh a more diverse and accepting place.
We will now take questions if you have any.
Councilperson Palmary.
I just have one question. So do you have any data or numbers on how prevalent this practice is in our community, in Oshkosh specifically?
Yes, we have a presentation. Um, yes, we have a presentation that we can email to all of you if you would like.
Thank you.
Councilman Peck.
I'll defer to Ms. Pansky at this time.
Councilman Pansky.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just wondering if there's any further contact information for the two of you, so that if there are members in the community who would like to help or, you know, see what they can do to help you, how do they get ahold of you?
Um, yes. Okay, so I have, my phone number is 920-312-9432, and you can text me with your name and addresses, or you can call. And if I don't answer, just leave your number and name, and I'll call you back as soon as I can.
And thank you for your time in doing this. I know it takes a lot to come up and speak to your community, but well done. You too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Herman? I'm sorry, Peck.
Regarding next steps, I would suggest that you contact Representative Assembly Persons Schra and Minority Leader Hints, as well as the State Senator Dan Fine. They are the local representative, they are the representatives that would represent Oshkosh. Their contact information is on the web.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have the consent agenda. Consent agenda items are those of a routine administrative nature that are voted on by the council in a single roll call vote. Staff recommends approval of all items. Any member of the public or common council may request that an item be removed from the consent agenda for discussion. Pam, did anyone register to speak to anything on the agenda?
Yes, item number 16, Resolution 18-190. We have Richie Cole and 9586 Vandyne Road.
My name is Reverend Richie Cole. I'm the associate pastor at Zion Lutheran Church, and I'm also the general manager for Jericho Road Ministries. And we own the building at 753 North Main, which was previously a childcare center. And we have closed that facility in that genre. And we wish to open it as a thrift store and as an aquaponics facility. In case you don't know what aquaponics is, you have a tank where you have fish in it, and you feed the fish. Their discharge goes through natural, a couple of natural processes, and becomes nutrients for plants. You pump that water into a tank that has rats in it, and you grow food in it. And so we're looking to grow food for our food pantry and eventually to market as well. If there's any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer.
Do you have any questions? Councilperson Palmary.
I don't have any questions for you. I read through the very professional and thorough information that was provided. And I just want to say that I think this is a fantastic opportunity and use of that building. I'm very excited for this, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Pam, did anyone else register?
No further individuals.
And bring it back to the council for a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Okay, only me, I guess. Resolution 18-194, it's approve amendments to 2018 operating budget, unity and community celebration for $12,500. This was money that was donated to this program by sponsors. So it's not taxpayer dollars, but our finance director has to do some, I guess, budget, money in, money out, so it's tracked. But this is all donations received from people who want to sponsor this really great community event on May 5. I see no other council member wishing to speak, so.
Sorry.
Councilmember Pansky.
Mr. Roloff, just a clarification on item number six, Resolution 18-180. On the way over here, I was listening to the city manager's report, and it sounds like this is going to be an every-other-year service. Is that correct?
I believe that's the idea. We need to inspect it on a regular basis.
So is this something that we would do as a multi-year contract, or would this be something going out for bid every other year?
This would be every other year.
Okay. Pretty interesting, though. Thank you.
It is. Thank you.
I see no other council member wishing to speak at this time. Would you please take the roll?
Herman?
Aye.
Pansky?
Aye.
Crowsey?
Aye.
Peck?
Aye.
Palmary?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Carrie Seven?
There were no items removed from the consent agenda, so we'll move on to the pending ordinance, which is ordinance 18-197. Approve amendment to comprehensive land use maps, changing the land use designation for properties located on the south side of State Highway 91 between Clearville Road and State Highway 44 from industrial to commercial. And this council referred back to Plan Commission at the November 28, 2017 council meeting, and Plan Commission does recommend approval. Pam, did anyone sign up?
No one has signed up.
Okay, I'll bring it back to the council for a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Would you please take, Councilperson Allison Oddly, you got to get quicker.
Thank you, Mayor. So just a couple comments I wanted to make. I was probably the most critical of this when we had it in November. And Darren Birch was very patient with my schedule, and the two of us actually made quite a nice field trip out to that area and thoroughly looked it over. And looking at it from the point of view, I can tell you, I think probably there's some other things that will come up where I think actually getting out of the book and actually to the property or the land is certainly beneficial. So when I looked at it on paper, again, I was not in favor of it. But going out there and listening to the thought process of why this is being recommended, I wholeheartedly support it and agree. So thank you, Darren, for taking the time. Thanks for taking the criticism in November. It wasn't personal, of course. So I do think, I do think it's the right thing to do at this time. I think what was intended prior was the right thing at that time. But I think moving forward, I can certainly see where, you know, it would behoove us to pass this.
Thank you. Does any other council member wish to speak to this pending ordinance? Pam, would you please take the roll?
Herman?
Aye.
Pansky?
Aye.
Crowsey?
Aye.
Peck?
Aye.
Palmary?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
And Carrie Seven?
We have three new ordinances. There'll be no formal action taken on anyone at this meeting. The first is ordinance 18-198, amend fire code to update references to the state administrative code for flammable and combustible liquids. Pam, did anyone sign up?
No one has registered.
All right, next we have ordinance 18-199, amend municipal code provision adopting state statute regulating purchase of possession of tobacco products by persons under 18. Pam?
No one has registered.
And the final ordinance is 18-200, amend various sections of Chapter 30 zoning ordinance. Plan Commission recommends approval.
No one has registered.
Thank you. Councilmember Palmary.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wondered if we need to save our questions, or not questions, but comments on this until the next hearing? Or can we, yeah, okay. Mr. Birch?
Regarding 18-200, some of the changes to the Chapter 30 zoning ordinance, it looks like we are amending outdoor commercial entertainment in both suburban mixed use and central mixed use. Can you maybe describe a little more specifically why that is?
Right, because in those two areas, in the commercial areas, we were trying to take away one of the administrative processes, which can be a cumbersome thing, which is the conditional use permit process. And we were going to, so we were eliminating outdoor entertainment from conditional use permit process and just moving it to a regular administrative process. Where if you came in and you wanted to do something outside a commercial entertainment basis, you'd come through, get your permits, and you'd have to apply. And if there was any issues, we'd use our public nuisance and other zoning code regulations to bring any violations into line.
So then this would not necessarily be vetted through the Plan Commission, correct?
Correct.
It would just be permitted, no questions asked?
Not no questions asked. There's still the internal review processes with the DRC, our Development Review Committee. So we're going to look at it for compliance with all the other codes. But yes, ongoing, is it, are we going to move it through a conditional use permit process? This code wouldn't provide for that. However, I will say that most of our properties, or a good share of our properties, there's own planned development, where they're going to be coming through under the planned development processes anyhow. So are there going to be some places where you're not going to be running an outdoor beer garden or something like that through the CUP process? Yeah, there's some of those.
Also, there was a recommendation to increase impervious surface area from 50% to 75% allowed, both suburban and central, right?
Suburban is, it's already in suburban. We were running into an issue where the downtown maximum impervious areas were less, you had, were less than the suburban areas. So we're bringing, we're bringing the urban mixed, and I think it's UMU and CMU into line with the SMU. We might be bumping it up by 5%, but that's reflecting the fact that we're in the urban environment versus the, you know, the relatively suburban environment, which is on the west side and far north side.
Thank you.
If you recall, we ran into that issue down in the Marion Road area with, I think, the annex. And when we did a comparison, all the other ones were sitting at, if the code came in at about 50%, everybody else in the area was 70%. And it just, it made more sense to us that in the downtown area that you have less, you have more impervious coverage.
And then the last one was, we have also in SMU and UMU, I'm sorry, only in SMU, deleting indoor food production and production greenhouse by the CUP. So then if we delete that, our, for example, the aquaponics operation that was just brought forth earlier, so are we saying then that in the suburban mixed use, we would not allow that anymore? Or are we going from CUP to permitted or prohibited?
Right now, we're taking it out. And this, right now, this is purely, and I've explained it's purely reactive based on what they did to us at the state level on conditional use permits. So they've taken away our ability to be really, being able to reject conditional use permits. So what we want to do is, we know that there's a number, we had, part of the ordinance, part of the statute change at the state level, we had a really good, we had a really good conditional use permit code. The state kind of threw that on its end, so right now we're reacting. We're taking out some of those uses. We're going to take a look at them, and we're going to re, we'll recodify our conditional use permit ordinance based on what's happening at the state level. So most of these things that are in there, they're going to come back in, and they'll come back in as a CUP or as a permitted use. But right now, as a protective measure, so we don't see, you know, a sea of warehousing in some of these areas.
Sure.
We're just, we're just reacting right now, taking it out, and we're going to be working on updating both what's a conditional use and a permitted use, and our conditional use permit process over the next few months. So, yeah, it'll make, I can guarantee you, it'll make its way back in, but we were just, we wanted to make sure, because it was in there as conditional use, that then that, you know, with what the state did, it really changed our relationship there.
We wanted to make sure we avoided having a situation where somebody tried to come in before the change was made. This way, we'll preempt those types of moves. It'll give council more flexibility down the road. So it's unfortunate that that law got changed the way it did, but that kind of came out of the blue with everybody.
Thank you.
Councilmember Pansky.
Well, Darren, now with that being said, the facility that we did just approve will be okay, correct?
Correct.
There's no issue going forward. Thank you.
If there are no further questions in council, would you please take the roll?
No.
There's no action.
That's not, I'm sorry. I've been sitting here so long. Resolution 18, we have four new resolutions. The first is Resolution 18-201, designate remainder of Lake Shore site as a community park. Advisory Park Parks Board recommends approval. Pam?
We have two individuals, David Borsec, 100 North Main Street, and then Tony Durth, 317 East New York Avenue. David, if you'd like to come forward?
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'd like to speak in support of conversion of the municipal golf course to a park. I think there's several reasons why that this is a wise choice. First of all, there is a demonstratable lack of park space in the community, and this would help to address it. This would be able to be used as a year-round facility for a maximum amount of our citizens. The citizen survey showed a overwhelming support of conversion to a community park. And last, there are ample golfing opportunities within the community that meet the needs of our citizens, and so would no longer necessitate having a municipal golf facility. Thank you.
I'm Tony Durth. Hi. Basically, I don't have much to add besides what that gentleman said. I didn't know what he was going to say when I signed up to speak. The only thing that I will add is that I think that not turning it into, I mean, I think turning it into a park is a very good idea. And keeping it as a golf course, or even maintaining it in the hopes that there will become a golf course, I think will just add additional expenses onto the Parks Department. Doing so will add extra costs for maintenance, extra cost for equipments, extra cost of personnel, in the hopes that in the next couple of years after Oshkosh Corp. is done with all of their construction, everything, that maybe it could become a golf course someday. And so I think that this is the right decision based on the public input on that poll, and then just the overall cost. And I'd like to see that cost that be put towards the parks instead of actually, you know, used to maybe maintain some portions of the golf course for a potential course in the future. So, thank you.
Thank you. Pam, anyone else?
No further individuals.
I'll bring it back to the council for a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Councilperson Pansky.
Mr. Mauer? My first concern with this is plans for the memorials that are on any part of this remaining land, and what the plan is for those moving forward.
Well, I could address the, any memorials that are located on the Oshkosh Corp. site. We have made contact or tried to make contact with all of the families that either have trees or benches on that site. The trees, and talking with the families, if we can contact somebody, we're working with them to relocate those onto the park property, the remaining acreage. Or we're working with them if they would like to have it placed in another park. So all the ones on Oshkosh Corp., we've been dealing with. Bill Stern has been working with the families on that. The benches, we're actually going to hold on to and see what happens with the remaining acreage. We may use it on that site. We may use them along the trail. Or there's other options if families contact us. We might be able to work out with them on locations as well. So we have been in contact with most of those families.
And how has the reception from those families been?
Most of them are okay with us relocating onto the rest, the remaining acreage.
Okay.
Some of them have contacted me about maybe getting the plaques, if it's specific, something specific to the golf course, maybe getting the plaque back from the benches. But if we relocate the trees, if there's memorial bricks in front of the trees, they're being relocated with the trees as well.
And if families have questions or concerns, you're the person to contact?
Yes, myself and Bill Stern will work with them.
Okay, thank you.
Deputy Mayor Herman?
Thank you. My question is to Mr. Davis at this point. Back in September 2017, when we were in discussions with Oshkosh Corp., or at least beginning to have discussions, we did three, I believe, three public information meetings. There were three diagrams that were taken out into the community to show what could happen with the remainder of the golf course. My question to you is, who made that decision to take those three diagrams out into the community, and why was not one of them a nine-hole golf course at that time?
Thinking back to the circumstances, that's when we were still preparing a proposal for Oshkosh Corp. We had not landed. for Oshkosh Corp., we had not landed them, they were expecting a proposal from us, so we gathered some community, community input before we could even give them a proposal, if you recall, and while we were doing that community input, we needed to develop some kind of diagrams to get people to react to, as to ideas as to what could be done, something we could also use to include in the proposal to Oshkosh Corp., so they would know what their neighborhood was going to look like. So, it was a process of coming up with the best proposal we could, with the input we could get from the, from the, from the public. I would say that I and the developer, development team, we came up with the general ideas, and Housefield and Levine, our consultants, came up with the specific graphics for those proposals.
Okay. So, it was determined by your department and Housefield, Levine, that we would not even show a possibility of a nine-hole golf course at the facility?
We wouldn't, we were not prepared to design a golf course in the time we had available to put together, to make it a feasible proposal to Oshkosh Corp. or the, or the community.
Okay.
That, that would involve hiring a golf course architect and doing some kind of work in addition to what we were trying to do for Oshkosh Corp.
Okay.
And I thought we were going to reserve that space for the community to determine what they wanted to do with that, and Mr. Mauer is still going through that process to determine what the, the best use for that space would be.
Okay. So, that being said, Mr. Mauer, we have to hire a consultant to do the remainder of what land would be available, right?
Yeah, we would go through a.
So, we don't have that cost figured into anything either, right? What it would cost to make the rest of Lake Shore into a park at this point?
I do not have that cost, I could give you a general number based on other park plans that we have done, but we.
And, and part of that also would be playground equipment, probably other amenities that we have no idea what that cost will be at this point, correct?
Would depend on the public input throughout that process.
Okay. Do you know how many rounds of golf are played at Lake Shore in 2017 season?
Yeah, 24,593.
Okay, so those rounds will go to West Haven, which is our only other golf, golf course in the city, which is already at 24,000 rounds a year already. Second, how many golfers played in leagues at Lake Shore, do we know that?
I did pull that information up this afternoon, and what I did was counted each of the leagues that we had rosters for, I came up with 228 regular players, and out of all the leagues, there are about 86 subs. Of those subs, only about 45 actually played in those leagues, so if I add all the, the regular players and all the subs, it's about 314 players.
You had, you mentioned in your memo, you had a meeting with several citizens who were interested in at least a discussion of a, possibly a nine-hole golf course in the future. How did those discussions go? What came out of those discussions?
Based on what we knew at that point, on the potential sale to Oshkosh Corp., we came up with a general area through working with Allen's staff, and took a look at what holes would be affected, and which holes might be possible to be reconfigured or reconstructed to possibly have a nine-hole course, and that did not include, because we still currently don't know where the roadways and other access points will be, so we were guesstimating that we could try to reconfigure about nine holes to get it shortened, what we had called an executive course style, which is basically a par-three, par-four type shortened course. There was some discussion whether or not the golfers felt that it would be a good idea to have a nine-hole course and, in the city, based on the number of courses in the area, but again, we left it at that. I wanted to see from the golfers if we felt we could possibly accommodate that, we were able to determine we thought we could at that point.
Okay. We used Poco for the very first time to put the two questions out there, what would you like to see with the remainder of Lake Shore Golf Course? One was the executive level, and you gave a brief description of that, and then public space. Do you think that 2% of the population of the city is a sufficient amount of surveyed citizens to really get a flavor of what they would like to see in the community?
Based on the experts, the gentleman from Poco who do this for a living, they felt that this survey was very representative of the community if we were to have a broader feel from the community, so they felt this was very scientifically valid. That's all I can go by.
Okay. Just one more, or a couple more, actually. Did you feel like you, the general community said talking to the golfing community was, was the best way to go?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
Instead of talking to the golfing community, knowing where things were headed, and that, that taking their interest into play didn't weigh any different than the rest of citizens? I know there, we had our outdoor rec plan, and we are short park land, I understand all that, but I, I just think that we should have looked at the golfing community a little bit more than we did, even though that might be a smaller number, but I just think not all the information is collected yet, I don't think the Parks Board has all the information that they needed, and anyways, I, just, now, I'll leave it as comments at this point, thank you.
I see another council member wishing to speak to this new resolution, so would you please take the roll?
Mayor. Oh.
Go ahead.
Okay, sorry, sorry, I'm not a little quicker on the draw, mayor. So, you know, I've been, I've been contemplating this since, you know, knowing that this was coming to vote, and I certainly appreciate the, the polls, and I, I understand what council member Herman is saying, I don't know specifically that I'm, I'm on that specific path. I think more my issue is, I mean, I like the idea of potentially having the space possibly be a golf course, I also like the idea of it being a park. My, my question is, is do we have enough answers to the different things, the unknowns, to really make a decision of specifically what this land is gonna be? And the process of, of what happened through Oshkosh Corp., of course, everybody knows, and it was very public, was fast and furious. Again, it goes back to that whatever happens with the remaining property is gonna be something that's gonna be a long-lasting effect for a very, very long time. I'm not sure that we know specifically, and I don't know that the community specifically knows what we want. If you're asking for a vote this evening, I'm, I'm inclined not to vote in favor of it, and it's only because I don't think we truly, really know what is an appropriate use of that area. We know we want it to be a green space, but in what capacity? I think it's too early to know, and I know my conversations with Oshkosh Corp. was that they did not expect to have something clearly defined by the time that their doors opened on their brand-new building, and my understanding from working or talking to Oshkosh Corp., you know, kinda through the process of, you know, where they were gonna locate their headquarters, and, and if it was gonna be there, and then after the vote went through, was that certainly they were open to options of what it would be, and they didn't specifically mandate, you know, whether it had to be parks, or whether it had to be a golf course, and they certainly seemed open to options as well. So, I just wanted to put, put that out there. I certainly see, you know, I think staff is probably looking for some type of direction to know what to do after this, but again, I'll go back to that, I don't think we have enough answers really, to really determine specifically what we wanna have. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Herman?
Thank you. I have one more question for Allen, and then I'll just make my comments. Allen, after Oshkosh Corp.'s building is done, the roads are in, the sidewalks are in, the river walk is in, how much acreage should we have left?
That is still to be determined, unfortunately.
So, why are we making, okay.
It's gonna be, it's gonna be very within an acre or two. It's gonna be around 70 to 75 acres, but the road still has to be determined.
Right, and does that incorporate the road behind? You know, right now, there's a road that goes behind, I guess we take Cor, and it goes, goes to Two Brothers, and we're talking about extending a road into Oshkosh Ave., but also a road if we develop some businesses along Oshkosh Ave., right?
Yes.
How much acreage is that gonna take?
The extension to Keller, I think, is what you're referring to.
Right, how much, how much acreage is that, is that gonna take?
The right-of-way and the area south of the road could encompass another two acres.
Okay.
But that's still yet to be determined, because we haven't gotten permits for those projects.
Right, so, so, we really don't know how much acreage we're gonna have left when everything gets said and done, because Corp.'s already had to for, for wetlands and more high ground, already adjusted the angle of their building, correct? And they haven't even started digging, right?
They have a site plan that shows the exact location of where they wanna put the building, and they have adjusted the site plan to avoid wetlands, as you refer.
Right.
That's what the city's doing with the road design as well, so that's why I'm, I don't have an answer yet for the final location for the road, and what excess land there would be available beyond that. It's a swing of probably two acres.
Okay, thank you. I, I guess, just in wrapping up my comments on, on this, I, I agree with council member Allison Osby, I, I think there's too many unknowns, and I, I guess I go back to my questions about the golfing community. I, I'm disappointed in city staff, in the city manager, and, and the Parks Director for not incorporating all the people. This golf course has been in this community for 100 years. I totally supported the sale to 30 acres, but I do, I think, we talk about incorporating our citizens into the engagement part, and when staff goes out and puts conceptual plans and don't incorporate everybody into the picture, what decisions left for council? You're telling us it's our decision, it's our final decision, but yet, the community's already weighed in, economic development's weighed in, parks is weighed in, everybody's weighed in. What they wanna see happen with the rest of the golf course, yet it's our decision, but what decision is there? Where, where to represent the community? Community, we always ask them to be engaged, get involved, and that didn't happen here. Meeting six months ago, and now we're deciding, and we don't even know how much land is available. Mr. Mauer talks about, we gotta build a clubhouse. What kind of clubhouse? Does it have to be the same kinda clubhouse we had before? He talks about moving irrigation and things around the golf carts, it's because it doesn't work, but yet, we don't have that plan. We don't have the plan for what we might build there for park space. Are we building concession stands? Are we building shelters? Are we building what? So, that cost, we don't know what that cost is either. So, I think to make definitive decisions on what we don't know, as Mr. Ross says all the time on the change orders, we don't know what we got until we dig in the ground. We don't know what we got out there until Corp. is done, until the roads are in, until the river walks in. Why make a decision on a facility that was a city, a Oshkosh facility for 100 years, and make it a definitive now? And I'm not advocating one way or the other for a nine-hole golf course or not, it may not be economically feasible, it may make no sense to the city of Oshkosh to go back in the golf course business, but I think we should just maintain, even though there is some cost, but there's cost to maintain anything that we own, we just had that studies need tonight, how much money is being spent on city-owned facilities. But even if we say we're gonna do a park, we still have to cut the grass, we still have to maintain, and then we gotta pay for a study of land, we don't even know how much is available. I, I just think we're rushing it, you know, it goes back to a couple things in 17 that we've had us all staff down on, you know, they didn't get a good cross-representation of, of citizen input and things, and this is just another one. In my opinion, that we are not getting enough of the communities into it, and I, and I, to council member Pansky's comments and concerns about the, the donated trees and plaques and all that, I think we disrespected a, a good chunk of our citizens in Oshkosh. Not selling the property for what's left, and I think we need to take that in consideration. And I think when it all gets said and done, maybe I won't be in council by that time, even though I just got re-elected, but the different council can make that decision what to do, but until we know, I think we're, we're moving way too fast again, and we've done that time and time again, and then we turn around and have to redo things or replan things, and, I mean, we put over a million-two into our parks this year, where's the money gonna come from to do this big study? To make, what are we gonna do with it? And we still don't know how many, it, it could be 60 acres, it could be 50 acres, it could be whatever, because something else comes in. I mean, these projects came fast, just like the arena did, and it all worked out great, and I'm sure Oshkosh Corp. is gonna build us one beautiful headquarters, and we're gonna have a lot of community engagement and, and open houses and activities and everything, and maybe a park is the right way to go, but I don't think we need to make that decision tonight. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, you know, we've been having this conversation for well over six months. There's one decision, is, is there gonna be a golf course or no golf course? And if there's no golf course, the most logical use for all that, that property is a park. What form of park we'll take, we don't know, I mean, it'll be a park land, open to the entire community, not a restricted, restrictive golf course. The golf course, 18 holes is a money loser. I can't but think that nine holes would be an even bigger money loser. So, I think that there's, there's only two decisions, do we want a golf course, nine-hole or not, or do we want more park land, which we're very, very short on in these current days, so, you know, we can have this discussion for the next six months, or 16 months, or 10 years, what, what the park will look like. I mean, parks have certain things, and parks, golf courses don't. Parks don't have no trespassing signs, like the golf course did. A park you can walk in, you can picnic in, you can do a lot of things in. A golf course, you can't, unless you wanna dodge golf balls. So, it's really this, I think the decision is, do we want to pursue a golf course, or do we not want to pursue a golf course? And how are we gonna support a golf course that will be a money loser? We've done that for decades with an 18-hole golf course, and the country club had to sell finally, after 100 years, they couldn't maintain it. It's a sport that's dwindling in, in its appeal, and I think we have to look at the entire community and the uses of that piece of land, what will benefit the bulk of the community in the decades ahead of us. And we, we can talk into or blue in face, as I said before, the one decision is, is it gonna be a park, is there gonna be a golf course or no golf course? And if it determines that we don't want a golf course, then we move forward with designing a park, you've gotta start somewhere. Mr. Peck?
Actually, I believe Ms. Pansky was in before I was.
No, I've got you next.
Okay.
You'll screw up my computer if you do.
All right. I made it known during this whole Oshkosh, when the vote came up, what the golf course means to me. One of the last, actually, good times I had with my dad prior to his passing was playing at the Oshkosh Municipal Golf Course. We made the right decision in selling portion of it to the Oshkosh Corporation. There's been significant discussion related to, oh, you can put a nine-hole golf course, I've got this great idea. In fact, there was one person that was out there actually pitching that they wanted to develop a nine-hole golf course. Haven't heard anything from that private developer about coming forward and building a nine-hole golf course on what is left, on, on the balance of the Lake Shore property. I'm sad to see a 100-year tradition go. I spent a lot of time at Lake Shore, that's where I learned how to play, as I indicated, I spent a lot of time there with my dad. But, a golf course is simply there for the golfer's use. One of the things that we've heard many times over the past several months is our lack of park space for the public, the entire public, to use. Here's our opportunity to begin to address that situation. We, people have had the opportunity to address council, to reach out to council, I have not received any communication from any golfers, anyone saying save Lake Shore, in I don't know how long, probably going back to prior to the vote of selling the land to Oshkosh Corp. Not being able to golf at Lake Shore is going to leave a hole in my heart for, for the rest of my life, but I've always said, when I'm on coun, as I'm on council, I make my decisions in the best. interests of the whole of the community. And what is going to drive the community forward and make the entire community better. So therefore, I will support this resolution to turn this into a, into a park setting that the entire community can use, that's open to all, and not with signs that say no trespassing. To our citizens, to say to citizens, you cannot go on land that your city owns, is aberrant to me.
Councilmember Pansky.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Maurer. Uh, this designation stems from your need of direction regarding maintenance, correct? You need to know whether you're to maintain a golf course or maintain parkland.
Correct. There's obviously different, um, maintenance needs for a golf course versus a parkland.
Different costs to do so?
Correct.
So what is, I do support the designation. I, I do support a community park out in this area. Um, my concern, though, again, is the timeline. If you get your designation of parkland, why the short timeframe? You stated nine months to have a proposal for the remainder of the land. Why are we rushing, again, to get this taken care of? If you get your designation and you know what you have to maintain, what harm is there in maintaining said designated parkland two years down the line versus that nine months? Why, why are we in that nine-month timeline?
No, the nine months would be what I expect to have the public input to develop a park master plan, if you decide to go with a community park. I need to know, it's golfing season now, so do I need to start ordering chemicals? I don't have a staff member on board that's qualified to do the grounds maintenance. I would have to find a staff member that's versed in grounds maintenance for a golf course. So, um, chemicals, fertilizers, um, getting staff, we don't have staff hired at this point to run the golf course, and I need to know that now.
Well, you're asking us for parkland. So what is, what is the harm in maintaining this area as a park for as long as it takes, with, with no designated timeline, to just maintain this area as a community park until everybody has their input, Oshkosh Truck is done, it, their doors are open, they've had input? Why, why are we not just maintaining this in that meantime?
Now, I, I get your question now, and we can maintain it as a parkland, that's fine. I just need to know if I'm maintaining it as a park or as a golf course. If we wanna wait to do the park master plan until Oshkosh Corp is done, that's, you give me that direction, and I can hold off, and we'll maintain it as a park, basically.
I would love to give you that direction at this point.
I just need to know golf course or public park for my maintenance.
As a public parkland, but I, I am not comfortable with any timeline at all. I, I support the designation, but I, I can't support any definitive plans with this area at this time. I would like to see this maintained as a park, so that in the meantime, we can all enjoy it as a community and make our decisions as we put one foot in front of the other. I don't see the need to rush this and, and figure this all out right now, but I understand that you need to know what you are to maintain out there, and I support that as parkland.
That's fine. I, and I guess we'll have that discussion, and we can find out from the consensus at council, 'cause you will hear from citizens what's going to happen and what's happening at the golf course. They'll wanna see, um, obviously, the river trail that we've been talking about, we're applying for grant funding for that, so that is in the planning stage already, but what else is going to happen? Are they gonna, are we just gonna allow them to walk on the park, which is fine, uh, but there is gonna be some discussion, what's gonna be the future? But at this point, you're correct. Golf course or not golf course is what I'm looking at. Thank you.
Councilmember Palmary.
Um, three points I wanna make. First of all, um, I am gonna support this decision tonight, because I don't, I don't believe we need to delay that decision, because the specifics of what that community park, should we go that direction, um, can come through that master planning. So we're not really hashing out those specifics at this time. And the second thing is, many of the public, of the citizens of Oshkosh agreed to support the sale of those thirty-some acres to Oshkosh Corporation under the belief that this would, the remaining acreage, would become parkland and open to all, as, um, the mayor and Councilmember Peck suggested. The third point is, uh, going back a number of years, the League of Women Voters did a wonderful study, um, regarding parkland and how challenged and under the standard we are in terms of the number of acres per block of people. So I will be supporting us deciding to, um, designate this as a community park tonight.
Is someone, no one else wishing to speak to this?
Just one more comment. Thank you, Mayor. I wasn't advocating one way or the other. It was a process, and it was disgusting, sorry to say, in my opinion. I support a park too, and we have that, but I think the process and how you led the community, even though you said it was our decision, that's the part, that's the process, and it continues and continues and continues, whether it's this project or it's another one. In my eight years in council, it's always been, well, it's council's decision, but then the process decided long before it even comes to us. And a lot of times, and we've said it time, time again, some of us, that we're the last to know. Here to be working with us, and I don't see that happening all the time. A lot of times it does, but not all the time. So for me, it's the process more than anything. Probably makes no sense to delay it. It makes no sense to probably have a nine-hole golf course. But to a couple people's comments, we don't have a lot of golf courses in the city of Oshkosh. The city of Oshkosh has one other golf course. All the other ones are in the township, so that revenue leaves the city. So we talk about money, and we talk about revenue. Granted, the golf course lost fifty thousand hours, I believe, this year, and it has lost for quite a few years. But it's the process, the how we got to where we got, that disappoints me. Thank you.
Would you please take the roll?
Herman.
Aye.
Pansky.
Aye.
Crowsey.
Aye.
Peck.
Aye.
Palmary.
Aye.
Allison Osby.
Present.
Cummings.
Aye.
Carried six, one present.
Next is new resolution eighteen dash two oh two, approve capital catalyst matching funds from economic development rev- revolving loan fund. Pam?
No one is registered.
I'll bring it back to the council for a motion in a second. So moved.
Second.
Uh, discussion. Councilman Peck.
Uh, this is simply going around for round two of, uh, getting a grant from the WEDC to extend our capitalist catalyst fund. You received information in your packet related to the success of the first go-around with this, of what it's meant for the, uh, local economy and business development. So I would ask for, I would hope that, uh, this is approved seven-zero, because this is a great thing for our community, and it has already springboarded several businesses, and I know that, uh, there's many others that we have the opportunity to create and grow in this community for this.
Does anyone else wish to speak for this? Councilmember Pansky.
Um, I don't see Mr. White here, but I do see Andrea. It's just a housekeeping issue. Um, in the memo, in the letter that is in our packet, um, from Mr. White, um, it does list, um, Mr. Peck is deputy mayor, and, uh, Deb Allison Osby's name is misspelled. Those should probably be corrected in that, moving forward, so, thank you.
Shame on you. Would you please take the roll?
Herman.
Aye.
Pansky.
Aye.
Crowsey.
Aye.
Peck.
Well, I, I mean, I'm voting, I'm gonna vote in favor of it, but I'm getting demoted in doing this, so. Aye.
Palmary.
Aye.
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Carried seven.
Resolution eighteen two oh three, approve specific implementation plan for Oshkosh Corporation Global Headw- Headquarters, twenty-one seventy-five Pinocchio Street. Plan Commission recommends approval. Pam?
No one is registered.
Bring it back to the council for a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Councilmember Pansky.
Uh, just a question, probably, Mr. Roloff. Can you verify, um, for the base standard modifications? There was a request for a number of outdoor vehicle displays. Throughout all of the conversation, it's gone from eight to ten to thirteen to five with three, like, what, where are we going with this?
Uh, the recommendation in the, uh, resolution is the consensus of the Plan Commission at eight from the last meeting.
That is the number eight?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Base standard modification one A.
I broke the thing.
Where you go?
I don't know where, Jake, Jake. Um, when I'm on the Plan Commission, I was just kind of overwhelmed by what I saw with these plans. I mean, usually, we're starting with the developers to plant a tree, or a bush, or a couple of trees. This, I think, Darren, it just, it, it's so surpassed our requirements. It's gonna be, I mean, uh, it's, it's developing a park, it is so phenomenal, so. It, it was fun to watch a developer come to us with a really solid, solid landscaping plan. So if there are no further, um, just no further discussion, would you please take the roll?
Herman.
Aye.
Pansky.
Aye.
Crowsey.
Present.
Peck.
Aye.
Palmary.
Aye.
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Carried six, one present.
Resolution eighteen dash two oh four, approve preliminary plat- plan as Pickert Estates, North Thirty-three Hundred Block of West Ninth Avenue, and again, Plan Commission recommends
No one is registered.
Bring it back to the council for a motion in a second.
So moved. Second.
Deputy Mayor Herman.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want, uh, it was brought on the Parks Board's discussion last night, because there is designated, uh, park space, and council may remember, we got an initial, um, diagram, uh, through some discussion, and, and great work by, uh, the developers and the Parks Board. We're gonna have one point six-six-one acres of, uh, parkland available for public that will be determined, um, as this development moves forward. So it's a, a great opportunity for some more public park space to be added to our, our, uh, resources. And just in a brief discussion, it'll probably be quite a few years before we get there with this in a, in a park, but, um, Parks Director Maurer did, uh, mention we'd probably, uh, stake out the, the park a little bit, maybe put up some fencing. I don't know if you have anything else you wanna add to this, to the discussion of it?
No, just last night, there was some discussion to make sure that, um, we've had some encroachment on other park properties, to make sure that the, uh, the property corners are accurately staked, and maybe we put some split lit, split rail fencing corners, um, just to make sure we're marketing where the park property is.
And, and I, I drove by today, and it's, it's, it's not quite the Cuervo Road, but it's, it's, it's right next to the church off of Ninth, uh, as you go west, and, uh, these are some of the things we talked about with the, you know, Mr. Roloff's goals, as far as, you know, upping our, uh, single-family homes, and this is a great opportunity. It looks like there's gonna be a lot of opportunities for new homes to be developed in this area, which will hopefully, um, with Oshkosh Corp's building in that, these folks will be looking for places to live within the city of Oshkosh. So, great opportunity for the city, and, uh, I think it's part of our partnership with Town Hall Gomena, how we eventually got this property into the city and everything else. So land use agreements are great. Thank you.
Councilmember Palmary.
Um, yes, uh, Mr. Maurer, I am just asking for a little bit of clarification on this, so, um, the question is, it looks like the Parks Department was recommending dedication of land instead of the fees in lieu of land, but then it looks like we have, whoops, excuse me, um, also referenced a combination of parkland dedication and fees, um, approved as a recommendation by the Advisory Parks Board. So can you just kinda help?
Yep.
Clear that up a little bit? Where are we at on that? 'Cause, uh, as I read the memo, it looked like we were gonna end up in excess in actual land with the whole swapping out. Can you just kinda lay that out?
Yes, last Tuesday, the Plan Commission meeting, um, there was a lot of discussion regarding the park property, and at that point, um, the developer was gonna be short. He was looking at one point three-eight acres for parkland, and it was required right around one point five-six, I believe, off memory. So a lot of discussion by the Plan Commissioners, saying, we want, we want additional parkland, let's figure out a way to do that. Um, so in between the Plan Commission and the council packet going out, I was able to meet with the developer, and what we were able to do was add an additional lot, one of the residential lots, which takes the park property up to about one point six-six acres, so it's about point one-five acres higher than what he has required. So what we will need to do is negotiate a purchase price for that additional point one-five acres. So it is higher than what's required per the ordinance, and he does not owe us, and we're not getting fees in lieu, we're actually paying a portion of that lot that he then dedicated as parkland.
So we will be adding additional parkland as well. And then, um, just another piece of this, the maintenance, uh, by all of the lot owners in perpetuity, you wanna give the layman's language on that for the public?
That has to do with an outlot, not the park.
Oh.
And that outlot is a kind of remainder piece that's kind of too skinny to be built on.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Okay, would you please take the roll?
Herman.
Aye.
Pansky.
Aye.
Crowsey.
Aye.
Peck.
Aye.
Palmary.
Aye.
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Carried seven.
Next, we have council discussion, direction to city manager, and future agenda items. The first is a workshop with the school board, Monday, April thirtieth.
At this point, I'm really looking for some suggestions on topics. I think, given, uh, some of the timely issues with schools, school security may be an appropriate topic to brief both the council and the school board on, and I, I believe Chief Smith has been working with the school district on that issue. Um, so that would be one, but I, I really, uh, wanted to put this on the agenda to get the council giving me some input on things they'd like to see. We have one more council meeting before the meeting on the thirtieth, so, uh, if you have any thoughts, please, uh, please share them with me, and I'll, uh, put them together with, uh, Mr. Mack, so that we have a, a general, uh, agenda. Time and place to be determined, I think it's the school board's turn to, to host, but I'll, I'll give you the details, uh, by the time the next meeting.
Uh, now, B is workshop on twenty nineteen through twenty twenty-three ambulance contract with outlying communities, uh, May eighth, that is a council meeting night. We would do this prior, this is a workshop, it'll be prior to the council meeting.
Chief Franz believes he'll need about a half hour, uh, so if you wanna do it at five fifteen to five forty-five, you may have sufficient time. Uh, but the idea is that, uh, one of, uh, Chief Franz's bucket list items is to, to get things in motion for, uh, the twenty nineteen renewals with the municipality. He's trying to get that done before he goes. I really appreciate that, but a lot of it's gonna be some issues to talk to council about, uh, some policy issues that are gonna be, uh, impacting you going forward.
And just one quick thing, um, clarification for the public, um, we provide ambulance service to the, the, almost the entire, almost the entire company, other, county, other than Nana Manasha, and the town of Vinland, and...
South, south end of the county, everything but Vinland and the town of Oshkosh, below double G.
So we're going out to Amro, Winnicott, and all portions, okay? And next is, identify two council representatives to Oshkosh Transportation Working Group. Councilman Peck.
Um, with the, um, dissolution of this council being only a week away, and a new council person being seated, is this something that we could put off one week to the seating of the new council?
When is that meeting scheduled for?
Twenty-seven.
That's, that's entirely, I just wanted to make you aware, 'cause Mr. Peschel had, uh, put out an email just recently, so just getting you thinking about it, I don't know if, uh, Bob was even planning to do anything before... if Bob was even planning to do anything before May first, anyway.
Okay. Councilman Crowsey?
I was gonna volunteer for this, but I'm on board with Mr. Peck waiting. We had a meeting planned in early May to discuss this topic, so our next meeting would easily fit into that.
Okay.
Are you back in? Back in. You checking in?
I can shortwire this.
It's actually not on thirty-two, but actually an item that I wanted to let Pam know about, but I had actually forgot about until I seen Darren a little bit earlier, but wanted to bring up.
So should we wait for you to decide when to speak?
Well, I'd like to speak now if you guys are done with thirty-two.
Well, maybe we won't give you permission. You got a turn.
Counselperson Allison Osby would like to speak now.
Point of order, please.
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Roloff, one of the things from doing the field trip with Darren Burridge, and I don't know if he's still here, if he's made any mention, but one of the things that we had talked about when we went out and looked at the property going out ninety-one was, you know, the transload facility that we know is coming. And I think a lot of times through some of our discussion, and as we know that there could be potential now with, with the change tonight, that there might be additional development, none of us really know what a transload facility looks like, sounds like, how it operates, pros and cons. We really don't know. And even with the industrial that is out there, it's a very, very quiet industrial. So one of the things that Darren and I had talked about is, you know, there's gotta be somewhere close by, maybe within a, a little bit of a, a drive, but a trans, an existing transload facility, and maybe it would be very beneficial for, you know, maybe perhaps Mr. Davis, Mr. Burridge, council members to maybe go and take a look at it so that we're well aware of exactly what the transload facility and what kinda impact it has to the surrounding area, so that we actually have a jump on it before we have to make any decisions, and maybe perhaps make something that, you know, is based on an assumption versus fact.
We'd be happy to find something for you, but one of the big things that we were promoting was that this is the only transload facility in all of northeast Wisconsin. They're gonna be getting business coming from the Wausau area because there's such a, so few of these.
Right.
But we'll find one.
That's why I was?
I don't know if it'll be a field trip. That might be a little long, but we'll certainly, maybe we can get a video or something like that. But we'll, we'll dig around and find something.
Well, I think at least somebody from council, I mean, I know Mayor Cummings in the past has, you know, and, and I have as well, in taking a look at like, just even like, development on riverfronts. And, you know, I, on my own dime, went, you know, to Dubuque, Iowa, and, you know, different places. And I know the mayor has done that as well. So I think, you know, I think a video is one thing, I think actually experiencing what it's actually like, I think would be, I think, very, very beneficial to our constituents.
Before you plan your summer vacations, we'll find a transload facility on your journey.
I'm sure the family will be excited.
I have a feeling that's what you're gonna have me do on vacation. So, thank you so much.
You're quite welcome.
Deputy Mayor Herman?
Well, I was just gonna concur with what councilmember Allison Osby was saying. And a video would work, but I also think a tour of the current facility when it's done so that we, because again, now that we've changed the zoning out in that area, what would be appropriate and what would not be appropriate. Again, a lot of times we wait till the developers come to us, but at the same time, I know one of your goals was to put a marketing plan together for our industrial land, because we're land-rich and money-poor. So I think anything council can get on information on what is appropriate in that area, especially because that's new, and we don't wanna hinder future expansion in that area. So I think it would be a good idea. So.
Very good.
Thank you.
We have the second opportunity for citizens to address the council. Pam, did anyone register to speak?
I do have an individual, but I'm gonna ask that she wait until item number thirty-four.
Okay, thank, thank you. We have now council announcements and statements. The first is National Alliance Mental Health Impairance, NAMI. Close Pounds Five K for Mental Health and Suicide Awareness, May fifth. Counselperson Palmary?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I'd just like to share with our citizens that on May fifth, there is a five K for NAMI, and it is through NAMI Oshkosh. They are an affiliate with Wisconsin and the, obviously, National Alliance for Mental Illness. And I'd like to let people know that. This is a really big impactful resource in our community, not just for people who are living with mental illness, but for the family members as well. They do offer a family-to-family twelve-week course. And this five K is their main bread and butter for being able to offer those programs. So please look on Facebook for that event, May fifth, and register your team or as an individual to support NAMI Oshkosh, or their website, OshkoshNAMI.org. I believe that's the correct website. I hope I didn't write it down incorrectly. Thank you.
Okay. And next, we have Refugee Housing Task Force, and that's me. I know we have someone to speak after I make a few comments. I've been approached on three occasions by people who are working with refugees as far as they not getting any response from their landlords as far as problems. There are some of it. It might be a language barrier. We're not sure, but these people just are not getting responses from landlords. Last week, I was at Oshkosh North with District Attorney Gossett speaking to the Communities Program, and after we finished, a youngster, a young male from Africa came up to me, which first of all, they don't do in their homeland. So this was really, I think, quite important that he felt comfortable coming up to a government official, elected official, and expressing some concerns with the same issue, the rental housing and not getting any response from the landlord. I talked to one of the teachers who, who runs the Communities Program. I should say, yes, this, this is an issue. There are kids coming there with cockroaches and so forth and backpacks. I told the young man, I gave him my card. I said, call me and I'll talk to you. If your family members can speak English, we'll try to communicate. But the reason I put down Task Force, I know there's a lot of people involved in this, and we're, I think my questions are, and maybe Ms. Prop can fill in some of the blanks, is what are we doing after these refugees come here, after whatever the time period is, and how can we help them when they have problems with their, their housing, in this, in this case, rental housing, getting, getting their complaints answered and taken care of? So that's why it's on, it's on here. I'll stop now, and we do have an individual would like to speak to it, so.
Kathleen Prop?
Come on down.
Eighteen thirty-six Hazel Street.
I don't have anything that eloquent to say. I'm Kathleen Prop, and I heard about this idea of the Refugee Task Force, and I've been working with refugee families, so I know something about this issue. And I support the, I came to support generally the idea of looking in to refugee housing problems or issues. But I'm thinking that the Rental Advisory Committee might be able to do this. They could, they could be the catalyst for it, and they might invite other people. Personally, I would be interested in sharing some of my experiences to participate in the discussion. Also, refugee housing is really low-income housing issues. American low-income persons can at least speak and communicate and get their point across, but refugees often are not able to speak that well. I think a lot of the problem is better communication, as Steve said, language barriers. It's difficult for them to understand the building manager, and it's difficult for the manager to understand what they're trying to say. Short answer is every refugee needs an American advocate, or they don't get to square one. And so I, frankly, I want to act as an advocate for this particular family, but other families perhaps don't have that advocate. So that's really all I had to say.
Thank you. Counselperson Pansky?
I think this would probably fit into your agenda with the school board meeting at the end of the month. I think they might have some resources available as well that you guys can work together and, and figure this out.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, city manager announcements and statements.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a few props for this evening. As many of you know, this is National Library Week, and our library has really reached out to the business community. And at the risk of excluding somebody, there were eighty businesses that responded to the library's inquiry. And I, I hate to say it, I've already been to two of them already for lunch and dinner this week. So they're doing wonderful things. All you need to do, my props are, you show them your library card, and you get whatever discount or whatever is special is being offered. And you also get a slip to fill out that you can drop off at the library, and you're eligible for a, an additional drawing. So I have to fill this out and get over to the library and get that taken care of. I don't think Jeff's gonna deliver it for me. He's gonna make me go to the library, and so I'll do that. But the response from our business community's been outstanding. The businesses really like it. Yeah, I talked to some folks that I've visited with, and they're very happy that they're able to participate in this program. But it's making the public aware of all the services available at the library. And one, I will plug one business, the Oshkosh Public Museum is in there. So it's a lot of cross-promotion with not only business communities, but other areas as well. So everything from A to Z and some numbers in between, but certainly encourage people to take a look at the Oshkosh Public Library website, OshkoshPublicLibrary.org. They have all the details of all the businesses, but it ends on Saturday, the fourteenth, so get out there soon and enjoy your, your time. And get over to the library and take a look at the services that are available at our public library. So thank you for giving me that little mini-commercial opportunity.
Counselperson Pansky wants to say something.
Yes, I would. I just wanna remind everybody that Oregon Street is under construction, and there are some wonderful businesses on that list participating as well. They may be hard to get to at this time, but they could definitely use your patronage. So please use caution getting over there, but please do make your way down Oregon Street. Thank you.
Back to you, Mr. Roloff.
Thank you. In the agenda packet is a memo that I provided council regarding professional services agreement with Matrix Consulting Group. Even though technically, this is something that I don't necessarily need to bring to council, I can't not talk about it. I want you to ask questions. Chief Smith is here to answer questions. I know it sounds like we're on the right track, but certainly, this is a big contract, and it's directly related to one of the goals that council had set for me. So we solicited proposals. Mr. Urban and Chief Smith put together the RFP. We received three proposals. It wasn't the, the lowest price, but it certainly was the most comprehensive proposal we felt, gave us the most value. And I think Chief Smith is satisfied that this group will be able to, to meet those needs, and certainly happy to answer any questions you might have about the memo or what Chief Smith envisions with this study.
Deputy Mayor Herman?
Thank you, Mayor, for chief. In this study, obviously, it's study needs, and that's based on calls of service, our geographic areas, time it takes to get the calls, correct?
Well, it, it involves that, it, it as one piece of it, but it's also looking at the type of policing that we do here in Oshkosh, and that's one of the, one of the, the benchmarks that we were looking for as we reviewed the, the proposals. We have a very proactive police department, as everybody knows. We, we work closely with our community, and we wanna be proactive instead of reactive. And we found that we are evolving into a, unfortunately, into a reactive department because of the amount of calls for service that we're having. So Matrix Consulting understands the model of neighborhood or community policing, and that was really a bellwether for me to see that they, that they understood that. They're also very independent. I do have experience with Matrix in my previous department, but the, the experience that they have in doing these studies reaches throughout the country. They've done departments as large as Austin, Texas. They just completed one for them. And they've done departments as small as Mequon, here in Wisconsin. They, they have a full breadth of, of experience in doing these types of studies.
Okay.
And they also look at our administrative function as well, to ensure that we're meeting the needs of the civilian personnel, along with the sworn personnel.
Okay. And I just wanna say kudos, great job this weekend.
Thank you very much.
Counselperson Palmary?
Yes, chief, just a couple things. I guess, first of all, I, I believe I also read something regarding some software that the department was looking at that would help with perhaps informing this as well, that I thought was in a separate line item somewhere else. I'm grasping.
Thank you. That was in your budget package for an item seventeen?
Yes, yes. So when we are looking at doing this staffing analysis, will that software also, or data that might be derived from that used in this process as well, or is that like the cart before the horse?
Yeah, that's kinda, the, the software development, the software acquiring of that software and actually implementing it, it won't be timely enough in order for this to occur. But I will tell you that this particular company is another, another talking point, if you will, for them. They, they do use hotspot mapping to delineate those areas that, that we feel like we have a large, a larger proportion of calls for service. And they also give suggestions as to how we, how we deploy our officers in, in respect to those areas.
And then the only other question I had was where we talked about assessing that gross patrol staffing requirement for the immediate future. And I guess if you could just kinda quantify what we're talking about, immediate future, are we talking this year, five years? What, what, how are you?
I'm hoping, I'm hoping after we start rolling out the plan with them, that I, that I'm able to come back to you with a, with a short, medium, and long-term plan as to where we should be based upon the data that's available to them today, and recognizing we're not gonna be able to solve all the problems next year. But how do we get there over a period of five or 10 years?
Very good, because I believe it was last year's budget cycle where we identified that we have a significant number of retirements, not just in OPD, but in public safety and City Hall as a whole retiring within the next 10 years. So that's why I wanted to just see where that would overlap and the timing of it. Thank you.
And just as, as a comment to that, to give everybody perspective, I had a conversation with a gentleman earlier today on diversity here in the, in the, in the community, and he asked me about diversity within the police department. And one, one of the statistics I had to share with him is that, as an average, it takes about a hundred applicants to find one qualified police officer. So we have a, we have a big task ahead of us as it relates to recruiting. We're, we're keeping pace. We're, we're getting ready to hire some new police officers here shortly, but it takes a lot of folks in order for us to identify one qualified police officer.
Thank you, chief.
The last item on the agenda is the Oshkosh Corporation update. We did a lot of things tonight. We're working on the scraping of the land to get the archaeological stuff done this week. That's underway. And the, the clubhouse is down, but we're still working on some of the, the basement in that area as well. So that's underway, and that's pretty much the issue. And then Alan mentioned earlier, you know, the road issue, dealing with the Army Corps of Engineers. It's really about how we're gonna slalom around any of the wetland areas to, to avoid having to go through an Army Corps permit, which could take a lot of time. So you'll be hearing more about that as we, as we keep moving forward with that.
Make a more scenic drive.
Okay, we'll go with that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's all I have.
We are going to recess until noon on April seventeen, twenty-eighteen, for a reorganizational meeting. Before I, before I ask for a motion in a second, we do take photos, correct, that day?
The plan is to do photos, because we've been doing every other year, and then somebody has to wait a whole year to get their picture taken. So we're arranging with Thompson that there will be photo day. So do your school day best for the, for that meeting.
All right. So I'm asking, I would look for a motion to recess until noon on April seventeen.
So moved.
Second, would you please take the roll?
Herman?
Aye.
Pansky?
Aye.
Crowsey?
Aye.
Peck?
Aye.
Palmary?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Carrier seven.